councillor Schmidt-Rempel.
Here.
Acting Mayor Parker.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Middleton-Hope.
Present.
And Mayor Higgin.
Present. The city of Lethbridge acknowledges that we're gathered on the lands of the Blackfoot people of the Canadian Plains and pays respect to the Blackfoot people, past, present, and future, while recognizing and respecting their cultural heritage, beliefs, and relationships to the land. The city of Lethbridge is also home to the Mayteen Nation of Alberta Region Three. And I'll start off with recognitions, and to my far left councillor Dodick. Councillor Campbell.
I just wanted to remind the community that the 100th anniversary of Plagours, it's a taste of the Arts Centennial Festival coming up on April the 21st and 22nd. It's at the Stirdale-Bennett Theatre and the Yates, all kinds of entertainment, lots of things going on, just check that out. You're in, and Mr Carlson's in it.
Councillor Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. I had the pleasure, along with councillor Schmidt-Rempel and councillor Dodick, of being in attendance at the Allied Arts Council's annual general meeting last week on behalf of council. It was also, it turned into a celebration of the executive director Suzanne Lent's retirement party, and the welcoming of the new executive director Jana Mackenzie. It was an excellent AGM, but an even better party afterwards. I know that Suzanne has been the leader and advocate of the arts in our community for, she's going to hate me saying this, a generation, nearly a generation, 24 years. She's done some amazing work. I've been very proud to work with her and pleased to work with her. So Ms Mackenzie, Jana, you've got some big shoes to fill, but welcome aboard, and I can't wait till your first time in front of council to introduce you further. But it was a pleasure being there. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Carlson. Boy, deputy acting councillor councillor Schmidt-Rempel.
I do all the things. I was honored to attend Lethbridge College's start grand opening on March 24th. The Spatial Technologies Applied Research and Training Centre provides applied research, technical services, and training to help develop immersive and XR experiences through spatial technology and has a vast range of applications. It's excited to have this located right here in Lethbridge, and it was really interesting to learn some of the things that AI can and soon will be able to do, interesting as well as a little bit scary. Congratulations to Youth One and another successful black tie gala. Thanks to the generosity of our community, they raised $120,000, which supports 100 individual youth this school year with free access to out-of-school programs, meals, and support services. And I don't need to tell our community how important it is for us to be supporting all the youth organizations in our area, because they are one of those ways of preventing and helping youth get the adult friendships and the adult influences that they need in their lives to be successful. And thank you to Southgrow for the invitation to attend its Southern Alberta Economic Development Forum. Speakers such as Jack Mintz and Todd Hirsch offered some insight to the economic future of our region and province, and I certainly look forward to one of the speakers, Varma's presentation this week at the Civic Works SPC. They're going to further educate us on investigation into converting waste into energy, which is something that's particularly interesting. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Schmidt-Rempel. And over to my far right, deputy mayor Middleton-Hope.
Just to follow up on councillor Schmidt-Rempel's comments, and there will be no waste in that, absolutely. And I certainly support it. It was a great opportunity to listen to businesses and talk about economic development in the region, so certainly supportive of it.
Next councillor Croson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. First, I'd like to give a happy 100th anniversary to the Lethbridge Fish and Game Association, who are turning 100 this year. And secondly, I just want to give a shout out to the professors and the students at the University of Lethbridge. Last week I was able to attend two presentations where they had done work on 13th Street North, and they had made proposals for projects that they could do, more research on plans that they could do for 13th Street North. It was wonderful to see the insight the students have into urban planning, into sociology and anthropology and different things, and it was incredible to see what some of their ideas might be for 13th Street North in the future.
Thank you councillor Palladino.
Thank you. I'm sure this has been brought up before, but I would like to acknowledge our Lethbridge paramedic and EMS teams. I initially took notice of these fine men and women during my mother's illness and subsequent passing three years ago. But now, these days, my father, who is 93 years old next month, has his own health issues and is relied on 911 on occasion. What we notice and consistently notice is the care and compassion and the polite and respectful manner that these professionals display. So Chief Adair certainly must be proud of them. And secondly, a quick shout out to the city clerk's office and the team of census takers pounding the pavement this week, going door to door. Just a reminder to everyone, these folks are gathering important data for the city. Since many grants are awarded on a per capita basis, accurate information ensures the city receives the maximum benefits from the provincial and federal governments. So thank you and be kind.
Thank you. Acting Mayor Parker. Nothing? And I'll just reiterate a few. I had the opportunity last week of attending the Red Tie Gala for United Way, and it was their first, and they're planning on doing multiples of this each year. I won't say first annual, because I guess until it happens one time, it's not annual. But it was their first event, and it was well-attended, closed off with Peter and the Wolves, if anyone's had the opportunity of hearing them. It was amazing, and offering swing dance, etc. It was quite a great event. And I want to remind everyone, April 7th coming up is Green Shirt Day. Now, we do have, I guess, a challenge, a friendly challenge out to our administration, because we are going to be closed for Good Friday, that on the 6th, we were challenging city staff to wear their shirts and their green shirts for the, well, I hope they wear their shirts, their green shirts for on April the 6th. So with that, and one last thing, I was, we had deputy mayor Middleton-Hope, myself had the opportunity this morning of attending and meeting with a group of individuals out of Boston area that were up and had made a purchase of multiple different buildings from Extreme Structures for their police, or sort of their fire headquarters and some of their different buildings down in Boston area. And so it was really good to be able to meet them and have that, big shout out to that Extreme Structures within Lethbridge and the work that they are doing throughout North America. And it's great to see another business within Lethbridge thriving. So with that, we will move on to the adoption of the agenda. I have a resolution from acting mayor Parker, deputy mayor, acting mayor Parker it is. Be it resolved, gosh, what a day. Promotion to motion. Adoption of agenda, of agenda. Be it resolved that the agenda of the regular meeting of city council on April 4th, 2023 be adopted as presented. Are there any changes, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor Higgin, there are actually four additions to this agenda today. There are two council official business motions, 6.2 from councillor Croson, rescindment of second reading of bylaw 6399 regarding 102012A Street South, and also 6.3 from deputy mayor Middleton-Hope, request of the government of Alberta to provide sheriff's resources to help manage encampments. As well, in the closed agenda, there's two confidential matters, 14.5 verbal, that's advocacy matter, 14.6 verbal, citizen communication update. Thank you.
Thank you. And just as far as these coming forward, the two-thirds votes have put it on the agenda, is that correct?
That's correct. So that would be five.
Five, six, five, I guess, with councillor Dodick being away. 5.5.
Six.
We'll need six, all right. With that, acting mayor Parker.
Nothing, thank you.
Nothing, all right. Question has been called. All in favor? You opposed? That's unanimous, thank you. All right, this is multiple pages, so I'm going to just make sure that it's up on the screen. And I'm sure everybody's had the opportunity to look at the consent agenda as well as the public, this was in the public agenda, from deputy mayor part, or deputy mayor Middleton-Hope, gosh, guys.
It'll take, it takes about two months.
Consent agenda. Be resolved the minutes of the following meeting of city council be approved, and the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the same. And as it'll be up on the screen, I do, as it's up on the screen there, do want to mention something. We do have those, some folks from the curling club here in chambers here today, and so thank them being here. It's an exciting part to our consent agenda, and we're looking forward to, hopefully, looking forward to the support of my colleagues for that. So with that, is there any changes to consent agenda? Seeing none, deputy mayor? Oh, oh, you do, okay councillor Carlson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And just for folks in the gallery or following along at home, every six months, we rotate positions. And so deputy mayor Parker and, no, deputy mayor Middleton-Hope and acting mayor Parker, those are new titles, so it's going to take us a while to stop referring to deputy mayor Schmidt-Rempel. So just, you're mayor, carry on. On the status of directed resolutions, if I may, Mr Mayor, through you to city manager or designate, the very first one about our LDMO organizational funding, do we have any update on that or know when it will be returning to council? Basically, it's forever and ever on there until we get an update, so I'm just wondering if we know when that's coming back.
Mr Elliott is online to speak to that question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Through the chair to councillor Carlson. Thanks for the question. I am prepared to come, excuse me, to come back shortly, probably in May, through economic SPC to provide a more fulsome update to council. However, at this time, I can say that we've completed the mediation process with Tourism Lethbridge and with LLA, and a letter went out closing that off just last week. So that's the latest update. A lot of work still ahead of us in terms of action plan and action steps that we've identified, and I'll bring back that additional detail next time we have an update in May.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Excellent. And thank you very much for helping me along there with acting mayor, deputy mayor, those changes. Thank you. So I'll turn the time back over to deputy mayor Middleton-Hope.
Are there any other questions or comments in regards to the consent agenda?
I see nothing in the queue.
Hold on just a moment. All right, councillor Carlson has backed away, we're good. All right, then I call a question.
Question has been called. All in favor? You opposed? That's unanimous, thank you. All right, I have official business motion 6.1, proposed Alberta municipalities' resolution infrastructure servicing and construction costs of school sites. Whereas section 670-1 of the municipal government act requires municipalities to enter into building binding agreements with school boards for allocation of reserved land and servicing for future school sites, whereas the Alberta government's current school sites readiness checklist requires school boards to obtain letters of commitment from municipalities to provide and fund the infrastructure servicing of future school sites, water, sewer, stormwater, electric, and telecom connections to property lines, if the landowner or land developer is unable in advance of provincial allocations of capital funding for school construction. Whereas school boards and municipalities have no authority to compel landowners or land developers to fund such costs in advance of the neighborhood being developed, whereas the cost of servicing school sites in advance of neighborhood development creates an additional financial burden for landowners as well as private and public sector land developers, whereas the costs of school site servicing are added to future lot prices, and this ultimately affects home affordability in a community. Whereas the current requirements and constraints force municipalities to encumber municipal financial reserves or municipal borrowing capacity, or to raise municipal taxes to provide the fund and fund the service, the servicing of future school sites. Whereas encumbering municipality reserves, municipal reserves and borrowing capacity to facilitate school site servicing is not sustainable and renders these financial resources unavailable for municipalities to make other much-needed community investments. Whereas the province currently collects the education property tax requisition, and all education property taxes are pooled through the Alberta School Foundation Fund. Therefore, be it resolved that Alberta municipalities advocate for the government of Alberta to ensure provincial allocations of capital funding for school construction cover all costs of construction, including the servicing of school sites with the required infrastructure. And for questions, open up to questions. Councillor Carlson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Through you to the mover perhaps. This is something that affects all municipalities in Alberta, correct?
It's a good question. His worship and I were at a mid-sized, midi, mid-sized city mayor's conference recently, and we did have the opportunity, because we've drafted the motion to the Alberta municipalities, we had the opportunity to take that before 24 other municipalities. I had the opportunity to work the room and connected with a number of mayors and CAOs. It is not universal, apparently, but it is very common. And we do have a seconder in Oketoks, and we are likely to have additional seconders in other mid-sized cities across the province of Alberta to support this initiative going forward to the Alberta municipalities, which the motion would be heard at the September meeting of AM.
Thank you.
Excellent. I see no further questions, so that was probably an opening debate, but you're welcome to open debate again.
Actually, in response to a question from councillor Carlson. Folsome one at that. Just simply provided us with an opportunity to draft a motion that we believe through administration is important to bring forward, certainly not only to those municipalities that are experiencing this pressure, but to those municipalities that perhaps haven't experienced the pressure yet. Some of them are smaller, and maybe just haven't had that kind of experience. But it ties up substantial dollars on the municipality side that we could be using for a variety of different initiatives. I know that Ms Mairns from Build is here today, and they have provided also a letter in support of this initiative to move this forward. So unless there's any other questions, comments, debate?
I see no further questions or debate.
Call a question.
Questions have been called. All in favor?
Thank you.
Opposed? That's unanimous, thank you. Move on to a, actually, I'll have deputy mayor Middleton-Hope bring this one forward as I was away at this public hearing, so if you'll take the chair. 6.2. Yeah.
Good. All right, so we have an official business motion, rescindment of defeated motion second reading by bylaw 6399 at 102012A Street South, sponsored by councillor Croson. Whereas city council gave consideration to second reading of bylaw 6399, which would allow the development of four residential units at 102012A Street South. And whereas second reading of the bylaw was defeated at the March 21st, 2023 city council meeting. And whereas the procedural bylaw 6250 allows for a member to bring back a motion before council. Therefore, be it resolved that city council rescind the defeated motion of March 21st, 2023 regarding bylaw 6399 to allow for reconsideration of second reading of bylaw 6399 at the April 4th, 2023 meeting of council. And further be it resolved that notice of this rescindment motion be waived, as required by the procedural bylaw, to allow for debate on the rescindment of the April 4th, 2023 meeting of council. To open questions and debate is councillor Carlson.
Ask a quick question through you to probably Madam City Clerk, as a process. This requires two-thirds, so that'd be four of the remaining members of council, or is that?
Thirts of seven is five.
Okay, for five, thank you.
Research that one. It does require two-thirds because we're not giving notice, and usually rescindments require a notice and an agenda before you can debate it. So yes.
Thank you. And if this were successful with the two-thirds, would that then immediately go to second reading today? Is that what would?
It would, unless it's postponed.
Thank you.
I see no one else, but I'm presuming that councillor Carlson would like to open?
I definitely would, thank you.
Please do.
So I bring this forward today to give, provide the opportunity for my colleagues to reconsider this decision. I've heard from a few people who do infills, that when they look at the Lethbridge track record, they get very frustrated. That people who do everything right, have an open house and get nothing but community support at the open house, and then based on that community support at the open house, decide to spend a great deal of money, $5,500, on rezoning, only have it to, only to have it turned down. But then they look to see what other cities like Edmonton, Kelowna, and Calgary are doing to make infills easier, to make it easier to build the affordable housing that we need in our community. And that they are actually considering moving their businesses to one of those cities because of how Lethbridge does things here. As a council that says it supports small businesses, know that we have lost some similar businesses already in the past and look to lose more. Note also that we continue to hear from the market the need for mutual suites to make these projects affordable. And if they aren't done through a legal council process, such as what we were looking at, they will still be done illegally, without consideration to parking, to appropriate infrastructure, to building safety, and to the needs of the public. There are numerous illegal suites already in Lethbridge, and I worry that decisions such as this simply encourage more. Also, when I look back at the hearing that we had, not one person actually said they were against the project. They had concerns about parking and garbage bins, and they wanted to be heard. And they could have been heard, and their concerns addressed, without actually stopping the project. Now, I don't bring this rescindment resolution lightly. I only concede of doing it when I was told by several staff that one of the homeowners, who appeared to be in opposition, actually cried afterwards when she realized he had helped to stop the project, that she actually wanted to move forward. I appreciate that people want some certainty that their community won't change out of recognition. But if we never did rezoning in Lethbridge, we would have a huge trainyard still in downtown Lethbridge instead of Park Place Mall and all the other businesses. We still have factories and industry in downtown Lethbridge. We still have a garbage dump where Third Avenue goes down to the River Valley. Without rezoning, we cannot make the city of the future that our community wants, so I ask my colleagues to reconsider this and to look again at this bylaw.
Nobody else? Okay, any other questions to the mover? And/or to councillor Croson, who is supporting this motion? Does look like councillor Palladino. Yeah.
Oh, thank you, acting mayor. My big question was why councillor Croson, but I guess you explained that quite well. My problem is, we had a fulsome debate on this during the bylaw hearing on March, was it? March 21? So I'm worried about disrupting that process. It's kind of disrespectful to those folks that were here at that public hearing, and to open it up again bothers me quite a bit legally, I think. But maybe our, maybe our legal staff can explain how, is it because we only got the second reading?
Ms Shigahiro of our office looked at this issue extensively, and I'd invite her up to the podium to answer any questions of a legal nature relating to this motion. Councillor Carlson. Oh, there you go.
Sorry, councillor Palladino, can you repeat your question?
Yes, I can. What was the purpose of our public hearing, I guess, on the day of March 21? If we're being asked to change our minds, what was the purpose of the public hearing? Because to me, when someone gets, or doesn't get third reading, and it doesn't proceed any further, the hearing is over and that's the end of it. You walk out either happy or sad, depending on which side you were on. But have we been, are we being asked to have another public hearing?
If there's new information being presented or considered, it would be advisable to hold another public hearing, so that would require advertising and all the same notices that were issued prior to the first public hearing.
How many times can you do this? I mean, can you go one after another? Like, there's eight, nine of us on council.
I guess that is up to council.
All right. Okay, I don't have any further questions.
Councillor Carlson.
Thank you.
Back in the queue.
Deputy mayor, are we in debate or questions? I was in for debate, so I can wait. We're in debate?
Certainly open debate. Now there doesn't appear to be any other questions.
Thank you. I will be supporting this reconsider motion. I think it's no surprise I was in favor of this when it first came forward, and so I will continue to support this.
Councillor Palladino.
I won't be supporting this. And usually, I support councillor Croson's initiatives, but this one I can't. We had a fulsome debate on the proposed bylaw on March 21. We held a public hearing that day. A time and date had been set, neighbors were notified, and it was advertised. This is totally disrespectful, as I mentioned, to the folks that took valuable time to attend the hearing. Can you imagine returning home after making a presentation at that hearing and witnessing the vote with the knowledge that your voice was heard and rezoning was defeated, only to find out later that council is being asked to reconsider their vote? Also, why are we being asked to waive the notice of rescindment? Was the public hearing just window dressing? Are we supposed to brush it off as if it didn't happen? It's a totally, it's an insult to council, and frankly, it's embarrassing. If this was a developer ask, he would have to wait six months for a new hearing. But a councillor can do it instantly. I'm not too thrilled about that. So I won't be supporting this.
Thank you.
I won't support an amendment to the procedural bylaw, though.
Thank you. Councillor Schmidt-Rempel.
Thank you very much. And just to add to what councillor Palladino has already stated, I too will not be supporting this motion. I had the opportunity to talk to some of the residents after, and there were a number who said that they appreciated that we turned this down because they did feel misled by some of the developers' information that they'd been, been provided. So, you know, not to reiterate what councillor Palladino said, but I agree with what he said, and I will not be supporting this.
Thank you then. Just, I guess, my comments before we turn this back over to councillor Croson. I felt that we went through a really fulsome discussion. It went through a process. The process resulted in a decision by this body. I'm satisfied with a decision based on the information that we had. This is not an anti-development, this is not an anti-developer motion. This is an individual case in which the majority of council felt that it was an inappropriate use of that property at that time. And the developer, of course, is welcome to come back through the process in six months, and I certainly encourage him to do that if he's able to refine that project. Any other comments? Then I leave it to, oh, councillor Campbell.
Just listening to the debate, I, you know, I did support the project in the beginning, but I think as my colleagues have said, we've had the, we've had the public hearing. I, we did the due process, and the result wasn't exactly what I was hoping for, but that was the result, and I think I have to live with that, or we all have to live with that. So I will be not supporting the resolution either.
Back over to councillor Croson.
I just don't want my colleagues to be surprised when we get more illegal suites in Lethbridge, and they're seen as a community that doesn't support infill. We have a process where people have to spend $5,500 for every rezoning, which is an inordinately large amount of money for someone to bring forward a project, and I would ask for my colleagues' support.
Thank you. Call a question? Okay, we'll do it by rule call. Go ahead.
Councillor Carlson.
In favor.
Councillor Croson.
In favor.
Councillor Palladino. Councillor Schmidt-Rempel.
Opposed.
Acting Mayor Parker. Deputy Mayor Middleton-Hope.
opposed.
Councillor Campbell.
opposed.
Five that fails.
Thank you. Next we have official business.
Next, we have official business resolution from Deputy Mayor Middleton-Hope, request that the Government of Alberta provide sheriff's resources to help manage encampments. Six point three, whereas for much of twenty-twenty-two, the city of Lethbridge was inundated with encampments, individual campsites gave way to massive encampment reaching more than ninety structures in and around Civic Park and downtown Lethbridge. Efforts to provide services and dismantle this encampment took months to accomplish while adjacent neighborhoods feared for their safety. Whereas our residents expect council and other orders of government to address encampments in our community, therefore be resolved that council authorized the mayor to write a letter as provided in the confidential draft letter on behalf of council and the city of Lethbridge to Minister Ellis, Public Safety and Emergency Services, Government of Alberta, and the city of Lethbridge respectfully, respectfully request the assistance of the Government of Alberta provide sheriff's resources to help manage encampments on a six-month trial basis commencing in May of twenty-twenty-three. Open for questions? Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin, and thank you, Deputy Mayor, for bringing this forward. I, I think it, it's, it's a, it's a good idea to ask for more resources. What is the likelihood? I know that you're sort of in touch with the, the folks around the province on these types of issues. I know Calgary and Edmonton have some commitments for some sheriff resources, trying to get them here by, within a month. I, I don't know what the likelihood is. Do you know where the province is at on fulfilling their obligations or their commitments to Calgary and Edmonton?
I, I would never want to presume what the province of Alberta is going to do at any given time. However, this request is actually a fulsome examination of a process that the Minister of Public Safety has initiated by identifying that there are available sheriffs to drop into the cities of Edmonton and Calgary. Candidly, both of those initiatives have met with varying degrees of success and challenges. What we wanted to do was say two things, and I, I know this from my experiences previously in this city, in which Lethbridge has often been viewed as the, the lesser of the mid-sized or larger cities. And so the scraps often do not necessarily fall from the table to the city of Lethbridge. So it was an opportunity to say to the minister that in fact there is a third city that experiences some significant challenges. Housing and homelessness is primarily a provincial responsibility. This is an opportunity for the province to step up and say, we can do two things with this. We can assist the Lethbridge Police Service and the community of Lethbridge in bridging a period of time where they are struggling to hire new personnel to fill significant gaps. The second piece is, is to respond to a community crisis. Who better, quite candidly, than the sheriffs? To simply drop them into the city of Lethbridge and ask them to go to traffic collisions and go to motor, to domestic disputes and so forth is, is simply not palatable. They don't necessarily have the training, they don't necessarily have the authority, they certainly lack the interoperability between our systems to be able to do that. So dropping them in and asking them to walk the beat or perform a law enforcement function in the downtown core seems to be a, an opportunity to squander resources. This is a request to the minister to provide strategic resources on a strategic initiative, which is to better manage encampments in the spring of twenty-twenty-three.
And that may answer my second question.
And the first question is, I haven't got a clue.
Okay.
All we can do is go to the minister and ask.
Okay, thank you. The six-month trial basis.
Yep.
Is it because, is, is it your thought that we would need these extra resources only for six months? Or was there a reason for limiting it to a six-month trial?
A couple of things. The police service will, will be engaging a recruit class shortly. That recruit class will be getting out on the street in the fall. But this generally provides us with a window of when the encampments are the most acute in the, in the, in the city, so generally between April and October. And it'll provide us with an opportunity to examine how the deployment works, how the sheriffs are able to work with our DOT and OMT and other areas of the city and service providers. And I think then at that time, we'll be able to have a fulsome examination to determine what that looks like going forward. The, the, from my knowledge, and, and I may be wrong, I certainly could be corrected on this, I don't know that there is an end date for Calgary or Edmonton. I certainly do, do not want to encroach upon the police service's responsibilities and ability to perform a law enforcement function within our city. This is an opportunity to provide them with additional resources to get them over that bridge gap between where they are today in an under-resourced capacity to a better resourced capacity tomorrow.
Thank you. And Mr. Mayor, my final question is, is this something that we would be better served in, in connecting with the Police Commission beforehand rather than just writing a letter on, on, on this? Or is this something we should undertake on our own, and hopefully the Police Commission falls along? I'm just, I'm not sure. I don't want to step on the commission's toes in requesting things.
Well, this, this actually falls under the purview of the city of Lethbridge. So it's not actually under the purview of, could be argued, not specifically under the purview of the Police Commission, although I have had a conversation with the chief. And he, his comments that I have actually echoed today were very pointed. He said, you know, don't be dropping people into the middle of the city expecting them to just pick up where our members leave off, because that's not an effective deployment of resources. So this is an alternative to that, which would provide the police service with a degree of relief and our community with a degree of, of, of security that we are struggling to manage. At least, we saw that last, last spring and summer.
Thank you. And Mr. Mayor may have another question, but I'll hop out if there's others.
Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, worship, just to the mover, I, I just, if you can help me, help me understand what, what a sheriff is. What's, what is their, what kind of power do they have? What's their, where do, how, how much do they get trained? Where do they come from? Do they, no, I mean, like, is...
Well, you of all people with your theatrical background would know what a sheriff is.
Well, I do declare, I do, but I'd like to know your information. No, I just, I, I don't know where they, I mean, just explain that, like, where, what do we know about?
Yeah, so the sheriff's service is, is several hundred, over a thousand strong. They have a number of different divisions. They have everything from the scan to surveillance operatives, to traffic enforcement, to criminal investigations, to corrections. So there's a whole host of activities that the sheriffs provide services to a variety of different communities. There are sheriffs that are sworn to enforce specific sections of the Criminal Code of Canada. And there would be a requirement, I presume, Mr. Lowen can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, but there would be a requirement to engage them to be able to enforce municipal bylaws and so forth in the city of Lethbridge.
Are, are they armed?
Yes, they are.
They are armed?
By and large, they are. I mean, corrections isn't, corrections in the jails aren't, but that's only because that's the decision by corrections not to have firearms in jails. But for the most part, yeah, most of the sheriffs are armed.
And do they have the capacity to arrest someone in, in an encampment?
Again...
I mean, that's always been the problem, that the police services tell us that they don't really have the right to arrest necessarily.
Yeah, that's not entirely true, and I don't know who you might have heard that from. Under certain circumstances, it is a viable option, but it's not always the only option. There are many options to dealing with encampments. Enforcement just simply happens to be one of them. So the sheriffs that would be coming to Lethbridge, I would presume would have requisite authority under various municipal statutes and, and provincial and, and federal guidelines as well.
And so there is a pool of sheriffs that are available that we would seek out from somewhere?
Well, the request would go to the Solicitor General, or to the, sorry, to the Minister of Public Safety, and if he was amenable to the request, then he would determine where those sheriffs came from.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Schmidt-Rempel.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much to the mover for bringing this forward. So you indicate that this has in fact been discussed with the Chief of Police and with the Chair of the Police Commission?
No.
So it hasn't been discussed with the Chief or the Chair of the Police Commission?
Yes.
It has been, it has been discussed with the Chief of Police. It has not been discussed, I have not discussed it with the Chair of the Commission.
Okay. And my concern around that is just remembering that Lethbridge Police Services is separate from Lethbridge City Council, so we do need to remember that members of council shouldn't be meeting with the police on their own. We should be meeting with the Chair, because that's how this is set up. Now, in meetings with the Chief, he has indicated that this is something that he is interested in having us do?
I'm not going to characterize what the Chief would have to say. I've had, I've had an, an in-camera meeting with the Chief. It was a discussion at another event. I questioned him in regards to the use of sheriffs. He provided his opinion.
And was that opinion that he wanted this?
Well, he identified some potential challenges, as I, as I've expressed. And those challenges are, if the sheriffs come to the city of Lethbridge and are dropped into the middle of the city, there may be some problems in terms of support. He did not have any, any positions in regards to the encampments, although recognizes that the deployment of the police service last summer to the, to the encampments was a challenge, and it was largely as a result of resourcing.
In, in sort of that line, then, how would coordination work with LPS? So would LPS then be expected to coordinate the sheriffs?
At, at the end of the day, it would have to be a discussion between the Public Safety Minister and the city of Lethbridge and the police service.
So we don't actually know whether LPS has the capacity to manage these extra individuals if they were to be dropped into the city of Lethbridge, or if, if they were to be appointed to the city of Lethbridge?
What I think we do know is that the police service is stretched in terms of resources cert, currently. To get additional resources, even if they are managed by the police and/or the city, this would be an asset in terms of removing the necessity to have police officers there at every shift to manage the encampments.
So it is possible that rather than being managed by LPS, these sheriffs could be managed by the city of Lethbridge?
Can I add to, if I can just hop in there? Just, part of that question is, I watched some of the different requests that came from Edmonton and Calgary, and in those, that work was done by, and I'm sorry, the, the top sheriff, is it a director or?
Director of the sheriffs, yeah.
Director of sheriff, it was through them. They would get the support and work in conjunction with the police service, but in the presentation, they were not, Edmonton Police Service or Calgary Police Service were not directing them. They were working in liaison, they would liaise with, with those departments, but it would still come from the sheriff, the head of the sheriff. So it's not city would, does not, does not direct, nor, nor does the police service, it is, it is under, under that director.
Under the provincial sheriffs. Right. But they, they would be working with the various resources that we have in the city.
And what if, when we talked to LPS, if we sat down and had a fulsome discussion with them, they turned down these resources or turned down the suggestion of these resources?
What if they did?
Like, I think we have to have, and, and as Counselor Carlson was whispering in my ear, I do think we need to have a referral motion to the Police Commission to have a very fulsome discussion on this before, before we sideline our police services with the suggestion of having these sheriffs. I mean, I, I certainly appreciate that you had a conversation with the Chief, and an in-camera conversation with the Chief at that. But I would really like to sit down or have the Police Commission and the Police Chief and Chair come and talk to us about if this is something that they think is going to work within this community, or if this is something that they see a need for, or what their concerns are. Like, I'd really like to know what the Chief's concerns are around this before we moved ahead with it.
I, I, I wouldn't presume to know what his concerns are or not.
But you said when you...
You're suggesting that he's got, you're suggesting that he has concerns. I don't know whether he has concerns.
But you said when you talked to him in an in-camera meeting at an event, he identified some challenges and concerns.
Well, he identified challenges to just simply dropping sheriffs into the middle of the city, certainly. And I understand that. And, and, and the, the manner in which I've crafted this, this motion and the letter to the, to the minister is to acquire additional resources. We've requested of the minister scan units to be attached to the city of Lethbridge. We have requested of the minister to return funds that are, that are acquired, that are generated by photo radar and, and conventional radar. We've, we've addressed a number of issues to the Public Safety Minister that didn't necessarily go through the police service, but will definitely benefit the police service and our community. What we're looking for here is, we're looking for a solution to help the police service and our community better manage encampments this summer. Last summer, we were resource poor. By engaging the sheriffs and by saying to the province, we are a player at the table just like Calgary, just like Edmonton, we want some of those resources to be deployed within the city. The idea of the encampments is ours. The idea of deploying sheriffs to Calgary and Edmonton was the minister's. And the way in which they are deployed was the minister's. So all we're trying to do is, we're trying to give him some ideas in terms of how those resources could be applied to the city of Lethbridge and improve the likelihood that he would say, well, that makes sense. I think we can, we can probably get you the sheriffs that you're looking for.
And I think our chances are, our chances of getting those resources might be even better if we have the LPS on side and behind us on this, and we don't have that yet because we haven't had that discussion with them. Thank you.
Counselor Carlson.
Sorry, we're still in questions, right? We haven't gone into debate?
Questions, yeah.
That was, that was an interesting debate between my team of colleagues. I will support a referral motion to LPC, because as somebody who sits on the Police Commission, I know we have different information than some of my colleagues might do, and I think this is a decision that would be better if LPC had a thorough discussion of it and then came back with a recommendation or not to council, because they, again, different information at that level, that would actually be quite interesting to have as part of this discussion with LPC. So I am going to make a, a formal referral motion that we send this to LPC and get their recommendation or not.
Okay, do you have a referral motion on the, on the table? And we'll take questions on the referral motion to start. Counselor Carlson?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, do we need a second round on that referral motion? If so, I will.
No.
Excellent. Thank you. Question around timing. I'm not on Lethbridge Police Commission. I don't know when their meetings are. The intent is, is to get them for a six-month trial run in May, so I'm just wondering how speedily, if we do refer this to commission, we can expect a response back.
I think I can answer that. The last meeting was just at the end of March, and so it will be timed, but like us, they can do special meetings and they can do electronic voting. So if we send this to them and say there is a time commitment, there is mechanisms within the Police Commission to get a quick response.
Excellent. Thank you.
No further questions, so debate on the referral? I'll, I'll start by, by saying that I, I, time is of, of importance. I just see that here, half an hour ago, Minister Ellis had just, had just commented that Alberta's government announced further action to restore order and improve public safety in Calgary and Edmonton, again hitting those two communities. More than boots on the ground are in the way, as a hundred more police officers will be patrolling the streets to keep our communities safe, take back our communities from dangerous criminals, and ensure that law-abiding citizens, Albertans feel safe and secure in their communities. Now, this is, this is policing. We, we can't combine these two. Sheriffs are, are not a local or not a municipality. It's not Police Commission that runs sheriffs, so I would not support this going forward as, as, I would like to, it would be great to be able to, I'm meeting with Minister Ellis this afternoon, to be able to deliver, hand-deliver this letter to him to start on. Now, they will liaise with the, with the police service here, but this is nothing to do with the police service. This is, this is a completely separate initiative. It was not done in Calgary, it was not done in Edmonton. They are working together with them, but it wasn't the commission that gave them the go-ahead to do it, so we're going to be doing different than what Calgary and Edmonton have done, and it, it appears that it's working for them in Calgary and Edmonton without having to do what we're planning or looking at doing with this referral motion, so I will not support it. Counselor Carlson?
Do, Mr. Mayor, appreciate those comments. I, I will support the referral motion, only because I, I did hear that, that the mover had a brief discussion with our Chief, who, who indicated there were some concerns or challenges. And I'd like to understand those, because like Counselor Campbell, I'm not exactly sure how, how things work, if they just parachute twenty... Councillor Campbell, I'm not exactly sure how things work. If they just parachute 25 sheriffs in here, who coordinates them? Who? And so I think it was Councillor Schmidt-Rempel who said, "Our chances," well, it improves the likelihood of this being looked as a credible request if we've gotten our ducks in a row and connected with our Police Commission and go forward with a united response or request. So I will support the referral. I'm hoping it can be speedier than six weeks, a month, two months, our response. But I think it's just appropriate that we follow proper channels.
Deputy Mayor Middleton Hope?
I would like council to be aware that the longer we navel gaze, the more likely it is that we will not get these resources. We have an impending provincial election. Once this writ has been dropped, and it likely will be dropped at the beginning of May, so we have two weeks. The likelihood of us being able to have fulsome discussions with offline conversations with the Police Commission and/or with the Chief of Police are simply going to delay this, to the point where a non-decision will be made, which means the Public Safety Minister will not be able to provide us with those resources. So time is critical. I would like to be able to spend more time. I don't disagree with having more fulsome discussions, but as the mayor has very clearly stated, this did not occur in Calgary, this did not occur in Edmonton. Why do we feel we're so special? Why do we go the extra mile to ensure that there is dialogue around this? This is an additional resource. If we are successful in convincing the Minister, and that's a big request, if we are successful in requesting the Minister to provide us with any additional resources, A, it's going to take time, B, we're going to have an opportunity to identify how they're going to have an impact on the city of Lethbridge. But to postpone this, to have additional discourse, is going to effectively make a decision not to do anything. And we will be posed with the same challenges we had last year, which are LPS is under-resourced, we all admit to that, and at the end of the day, they're going to struggle with how to deal with encampments. So I think it's important that we do what we get asked to do, which is make a decision today. Thank you.
Thank you. For clarification, I know, Councillor Carlson, you've already debated to clarification question?
Not for debate, just for clarification, if I can. It's been raised here that Calgary Police Commission, Edmonton Police Commission, and the services weren't part of this sheriff's discussion. But I saw the announcements, I saw the press releases, and they were all in concert with those organizations. So I want to know how we know that-
When the announcement was made, so this is a request, and correct me if I'm wrong, to the mover, to take it in and speak to the Minister. The Minister will then gather everyone together, as he did in these other communities, and get work together for this announcement. So they were in, they were together at the announcement, but that was at the stage after there was funding and direction given from the Minister. Then they went and worked with everyone and said, "Here's what the resources we have. Are we all on board? Can we, you know, will engage together at that time?" So prior, there was not. And yes, they were there at the announcements.
We do know that for sure, that Edmonton Police Commission, Calgary Police Commission weren't at all involved in any of these discussions or trying to figure out-
I will not guarantee that. Sorry, but I just know that the first request going to the Minister was for additional resources from the community. So, and sorry, that, I know they were in the final, you know, announcement. I see no further debate. So on the, again, this is a vote on the referral motion.
Actually, can I close, since I brought the referral motion forward?
I'm sorry, I did see, my apologies.
And can I, can I-
Yes.
Just talk about the referral and just make sure that it's clear? So what I have is that this motion be referred to the Lethbridge Police Commission to obtain their approval and return to council with the response? Is that what I heard?
That's to the mover of the referral. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense, to give us any recommendations they might have.
All right. And to close debate, I'm sorry, to open and close, my apologies, Councillor Carlson. Go ahead.
Thank you. We often talk about the importance of a maiden Lethbridge purpose, to have something that we actually do. And I think it would actually be a smart idea to actually include the Police Commission and to have that conversation. Because one of the things I've seen today is, of course, they're looking at more resources now for Calgary and Edmonton. And one of the things I've seen in some of the news reports is because that what they were hoping that the sheriffs would do is not actually working. So I think we need to be smart about how we do this. Yes, this, we can get a quick turnaround, I think, from the Police Commission, because as I said, they can do electronic voting, they can call a special meeting, they can do things relatively quickly, same as we could do. But it would make for a stronger approach. It would make for something that is actually going to, you know, work on the problems in Lethbridge, rather than just having what Calgary and Edmonton did because they've done it. We have to actually make sure it's something that is suitable. And so I would request that my colleagues support the referral motion. And I'll call the question.
Question's been called. All in favor of the referral? Opposed? Let's do it by roll call, Madam City Clerk?
Councillor Carlson?
In favor.
Councillor Palladino?
Opposed.
Councillor Schmidt-Rempel?
In favor.
Acting Mayor Parker? Deputy Mayor Middleton Hope?
Opposed.
Mayor Hagan?
Opposed.
Councillor Campbell?
Opposed.
Five, or two to, two to five? Oh, Councillor Carlson, I'm sorry.
In favor.
Two. Sorry, my apologies. Three to five, that's defeated.
All right. So we'll move back to the original OBM and request the government, any questions on the original, or we can move right to debate? If there's nothing, we'll move to the mover for debate. Open debate.
Well, I think you've heard my points. I just want to be clear on them. This is not to ignore the Police Commission, nor the Chief of Police, or anybody else. This is a parallel line of support that we're asking the appropriate Minister for additional resources, plain and simple. How they are deployed, who they are responsive to, what they actually accomplish while they're here is the secondary question that could be asked. I think it is important, and I agree with Councillor Carlson when she says that we can't just simply drop people into the middle of the city and expect that they're going to be, and I paraphrasing, Councillor Carlson, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but we don't want to just simply drop people into the middle of the city and expect that they're going to be able to accomplish something. I agree that that has been found in both Calgary and Edmonton not to be successful. She talked about a maiden Lethbridge solution. This is a maiden Lethbridge solution. We're talking about utilizing provincial police, peace officers for the purpose of managing encampments. Housing is a primary responsibility of the province of Alberta. It allows us a hook, if you will, to request the province of Alberta to support managing these encampments more efficiently. We are in a time crunch, and I would like not to be in a time crunch, but let's face facts, we are. And if we don't do something progressive, then we're going to be fraught with many of the same kinds of challenges we had last year. Resourcing, the establishment of encampments, the complaint from the public, the unsafe environment that they present. So I would ask for our support from members of council on moving this forward to the stage where we would bring a letter forward, which is prepared and presented, to the Minister so that he can review it. If he shoots us down, then we can go back to square one. If he says yes, then we can go back to square one again. And we can say, "Okay, now we've got some additional resources. How are they going to be deployed? Can we work with the province to work on a deployment strategy that will be effective for Lethbridge?" Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Carlson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would have preferred that we did the referral motion, obviously, because I think it would strengthen our case, but I will be supporting the request. Because the referral motion was defeated, I'm wondering if the mover would support maybe an amendment that we also write to the Police Commission to have their input. Basically, so that we're prepared. If the Minister says, "Yep, we kind of like this idea. Where are you at?" We can say, "Well, we're talking with the Police Commission," et cetera. So basically, it's to move forward on both fronts, to say, "Let's talk to the Minister, and let's also get Police Commission, hopefully, backing us up."
I'm certainly amenable to that. And I certainly encourage the Police Commission to get back to us in a timely manner with a response.
Thank you. So I'm wondering, Madam City Clerk, is there, how would I phrase? So it's not a referral motion, but it's-
It would be a friendly if Deputy Mayor accepted it.
Further that Lethbridge Police, the letter or the information or the-
He provided to.
He provided to Police Commission for their comments.
Recognizing that if we are, if it is successful this afternoon by your vote to take this letter to the Minister for Public Safety, that would occur peremptorily. But secondarily, support from and how those resources might be deployed certainly would be within the purview of the Chief of Police and/or the Minister and/or the Director of Sheriffs, and certainly would, to a certain extent, involve discussions with the Police Commission. We don't have the resources yet, so that's what we need to acquire.
And I think the motion is on the screen. Further be resolved that the Lethbridge Police Commission be advised of this request.
I appreciate the advisement. I'm sure they're listening. But I was hoping that it would be more that advise this request and-
Future-
Requested to provide any comment.
That delay it.
I think that proposal actually delays the process.
I don't believe so. We're approving everything you've asked for, but we're also saying, and Commission, get back to us with your comments, so that when, if we get the funding, we're already further down the line, because May is coming.
We actually need the bodies. We need the bodies here. We need sheriffs. We don't just need resources or funding. Yeah. Okay, so-
Can we, can we put, if I could add to that, could we put by a date then? Is, because it's not, it's not going to matter, the request is going to go in. And I know what you're reading, and it's kind of like the referral mixed into a non-referral. But I, sorry, I'm debating here now. My apologies.
No, and my intent is not to delay anything. If this passes, the request goes forward. But we've also then requested that the Police Commission provide their input to us, because if we're making the request, the Minister's going to come back and talk to you. You should have all the information you can gather ahead of time.
So I'm just looking at the, be resolved that the Lethbridge Police Commission be advised of this request in order for, I've seen if my eyes are good enough, order for the Mission to provide input by? By, do we put a week? Do we put?
Deputy Mayor hasn't accepted that as a friendly.
I'm, we're, I don't want to obscure this, and I don't want to delay it. And I think the language is leading in that direction. I may be wrong, but I think the language is leading in that direction, because now we're waiting for the Police Commission to provide us with some input. That's not what the intent of the motion is. The intent of the motion is to move this forward and peremptorily. I am certainly all for inclusion of the Police Commission and/or any other bodies to provide insights, but I want to reinforce the importance of moving this forward to the Minister peremptorily, so that it's on his plate. He can make decisions now prior to May 1st, if you will, because of the other considerations.
And Deputy Mayor, my interest is not to delay anything. Perhaps it's further be resolved that Lethbridge Police Commission be copied on the letter and requested to provide any input they may have. That means the letter's going to be sent, but if they want to come back to us and say, "This is good, this is where we have some questions," can happen whenever.
Okay, we're seeing this-
There's a presumption here that the Police Commission, the Police Chief, and any other entity within the city of Lethbridge is not going to be opposed to additional resources. The way in which they're deployed and the challenges that that might present are secondary and important, I agree. But the impetus here is to move this forward in any way that we can to get it before the Minister. If the Minister turns us down, then we've got to go back to square one anyway. If the Minister is supportive, then there's potentially some resources that may be coming down the turnpike. That's all we're asking for.
So I'm going to read the friendly, and then we'll ask the questions, if there's any questions on the friendly. And that would be, further be resolved, the Lethbridge Police Commission be copied on the request letter with a, some to provide input, with a, sorry, request to provide input. Hope that's right? I just did see the optometrist yesterday, and I do have to increase my, it comes with age unfortunately, but yes, I think we've got it. To request, oh, it's a good guess then, to request, with a request to provide input. Is that fair? Any questions on that? Or is this in for debate, Councillor Carlson, Councillor Campbell? Debate?
Debate.
Debate, all right. So we'll move on. It's been accepted, friendly. We'll continue on with debate. Move over to Councillor Carlson.
I will be voting against this, both as a member of the Police Commission and as a member of council. I do not believe this is the appropriate way to move forward. There are other things that can be done, and I will be voting against this. Thank you.
Councillor Campbell?
Thank you. I'm not going to be saying anything too different from what people have been saying here. This is an immediacy issue that we have right now. The Minister's here. Give him the letter. Let's find out what happens. And if, I guess it's one of those situations, is asked now, and we'll ask the Police Commission for forgiveness if they don't want it. So, but I don't see that getting the resources that is needed is going to be a problem. I do have concerns about, you know, what the input of the sheriffs, along with CPOs, with the LPS, with, along with the watch, and how they're all going to coordinate everything, and there's going to be some issues there. But I think we need to ask this now, and we can figure things out later. So I will be supporting the resolution.
Thank you, Councillor Campbell. And I too will be supporting against it. I appreciate my colleague just mentioned that, you know, we can look into this. This is in its infancy. And I just, the opportunity to, a meeting with Minister Ellis this afternoon, later this afternoon, the opportunity to hand-deliver this, I think, is great. It's, we're talking about urgency and time. It's great. And yes, engagement, I couldn't agree more. Being a previous member of the Commission, I would like to be up to, absolutely, that's important. I think we're trying to hop ahead of what this request is currently, but, and I would hope that that would be done. And I would, I would be surprised if it was not. They were going to need to work together. The community is, over the past year especially with encampments that was brought forward in this OBM, have, has been, there's a lot of complaint about our police service not doing their job. Now, I believe that they're doing their job. They're just under-resourced. So this will give additional resources to them to be able to help them through some of these challenging times, as what's been done in other communities that, the larger communities. And I don't want to be left out. I think this is a great resolution. And again, it's in its infancy. This is first the request, and I believe the communication will happen after. And very important, yes, to not only include the Police Commission, but anyone else that could help them here, if it's different social service providers. All of that work needs to be done to make sure that we have, you know, the best resources available within our community. So I will be supporting it. And I just did want to add one more thing, as on behalf of Commission, I'm sure, I just wanted to make sure, Councillor Carlson, you were mentioning, I would not vote on this on behalf of the Commission. You're not voting as a Commission member here, just as a councillor member. That's understood, right?
I'm voting as a councillor, but based on what I know from the Commission, I will not be voting for this.
Well, I would, I need some clarification then. Based on what you know, could you clarify that then? Why this, why they would be against it?
I cannot in an open session, because what I know comes from in-camera. I'm just saying I will not be voting for this.
Okay, based on, okay. Thank you. Councillor Schmidt-Rempel?
Thank you very much. To echo what Councillor Carlson said, there are some things that we have discussed in camera at the Police Commission that we cannot discuss in an open session here at council or at all. I will, however, be supporting this, understanding the emergent need for this, and that this will be directed to the Police Commission as well as other groups in our community. I am, however, going to remind members of council, we are not to be meeting with the Police Chief. The only person that can be meeting with the Police Chief is the Chair, and all direction to the Police Chief needs to go through the Commission. So that's just a reminder to all of us that Lethbridge Police- that Lethbridge Police Services are completely separate from the city of Lethbridge, and we need to remember and maintain that. I will, like I said, be supporting this, but only because I know that Lethbridge Police Commission will be involved in any dispersion of what happens with the sheriffs once that perhaps comes to it.
Thank you, and I just, I know I've already debated, but I'm going to just clarify something, that there's nothing that precludes us from meeting, chatting with the, with the Chief of Police. We just cannot give direction. We can have those discussions, and I will actually continue to have those discussions. We just can't give direction. That does not come from... So if Member of Council wants to meet with the Police Chief, I see absolutely no problem there, as long as no direction is given. Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, just because this is going forward right now, and maybe it's just on process for me, so through you to the City Clerk if I can. The, the proposed letter remains confidential? Or that, we have, we only have the resolution in front of us. We have been sent a proposed letter, I believe?
So if I could just address that, yes, you've been provided with the letter so that you know what the contents are, but it is confidential because the Minister of Public Safety has not received it.
I'm just confused why it needs to be confidential.
Because he hasn't refused it. He hasn't received it yet. When he receives it, if, if there's a motion or there's an argument advanced to, to make it public, that's fine, but he hasn't received it yet. I think it's only fair that he receives the, the letter in advance before it be made public. That's the last thing I think you want to do, is notify the Minister of the contents of a letter by putting it out in the, in the, in the public forum.
I don't, I don't agree with that, but that's fine, I guess. And why is it remain confidential if, I just don't know legally?
Counsel could make a motion that it would be released upon a response from the Minister, or Counsel can make any motion they want with regards to the...
Thank you for that. Second question is, if I can, just because we are saying to send this confidential letter, so I won't talk about the confidential letter, except... Maybe we need to go in camera to escape. I would like it to be public if we're going to discuss a confidential letter. I can't.
If, could we have a motion, if you're interested, we go motion to go in camera? Discuss this? Counsel Carlson, all in favor? All right, we'll just, I'm sorry, guess in the, in the... All right, we are back, and, okay, we lost a few individuals. Thanks for all of you in the gallery that have made it back in. Appreciate it. All right, we'll move on to the official business and continue with, with debate. Now, I am going to open it up for debate. Anybody who has not debated on this amended resolution, this friendly amendment? If anybody else, if not, we'll ask Counsel Middleton-Hope to close, and I don't see anyone else that wants to debate, so Counsel Middleton-Hope to, or Deputy Mayor to...
We've had, we've had a fulsome discussion. I'll call a question.
Question has been called. All in favor? Was opposed? Can you do a roll call, Madam City Clerk?
Five to two, seven to two, six to two.
Just two, actually, sorry, the two, and Belinda? Sorry, I'm sorry. Counselor, I'm going first names to lassies, my apologies, my colleagues. Counselors Crowson and Counsel Carlson are the two again. Okay, six-two. Thank you. All right, move on. And we'll move on to the closed items agenda, and actually, just a minute, I'm sorry. Council updates. Actually, I will take just a quick opportunity to, to give an update. I had the opportunity last week of meeting with our sister city, the mayor of our sister city in, I was going to say Sol LeRonde, boy, I tell you what. We've got, in Culver City, and had a great... ...I am going to open it up for debate, anybody who has not debated on this amended resolution, this friendly amendment. If anybody else, if not, we'll ask Counselor Middleton-Hope to close, and I don't see anyone else that wants to debate, so Counselor Middleton-Hope to, or Deputy Mayor to...
We've had, we've had a fulsome discussion, I'll call a question.
Question has been called, all in favor? Who's opposed? Can you do a roll call, Madam City Clerk?
Five to two, seven to two, six to two.
Just two, actually, sorry, there's two, and Belinda? Sorry, I'm sorry. Counselor, I'm going first names to lassies, my apologies, my colleagues. Counselors Croson and Counselor Carlson are the two again, okay, six to, thank you. Alright. Move on. We have, and we'll move on to the closed items agenda, and actually, just a minute, I'm sorry. Council updates. Actually, I, I will take just a quick opportunity to, to give an update, I had the opportunity last week of meeting with our sister city, the mayor of our sister city in, I was going to say Sol, the wrong boy, I tell you what, we've got, in Culver City, and had a great opportunity to, to touch base with him and his council, and, and I've got, I want to make sure that community knows as well as my colleagues, that issues and concerns that we feel in our community are not solely Lethbridge issues. These are throughout, not just Canada, but deep into the States as well, these are the same issues. I sat in a council meeting last week in Culver City, and we could find and replace Lethbridge in so many of those resolutions, and the, the presenters that were coming forward were, were spot on to what, the issues that we are, are feeling on a daily basis, especially with the social issues, and so, understand that, I know it doesn't give us a lot of comfort, but it does show that we are not the only ones that are struggling with homelessness, with, with housing, with any of these social issues, the, the opioid crisis, this is happening throughout the world, and we've seen it in, in North America, so some comfort to, to hear that, not that it's the best thing to know that everyone else is having struggles like we are, but it does happen throughout other communities. So, with that, there was a, a lot of great conversation with, with the mayor there, and we've asked to share different ideas and maybe ways that we can help each other going forward, so it's, they seem to be ahead on a lot of things, and, and we were talking about different areas that we could maybe work with encampments, is it, do you, do you put an area, do you, they're working through that right now too, so it'd be great to be able to hear some of the challenges that they're, they're up against, and, and maybe we can, you know, take some advice and, and comments from them. So it was a great conversation, and it was, it was the first time I was able to, to meet the mayor from our sister city, and it was, it was a, a, a great time. So with that, we will move on, is there any other council updates? Seeing none, we will move on to our closed session resolutions. Moved, the first one by Counselor Carlson, Boards, Commissions and Committees Matter Legal Update 14.1, be resolved that council direct that the closed meeting reports, documents and discussion with respect to Boards, Commissions and Committees Matter Legal Update remain confidential pursuant to Section 27, privileged legal of the Freedom of Information Protection and Privacy Act. Further be resolved that council direct administration to proceed with the confidential recommendation presented in closed session. Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, unless there's any further discussion, I'll call for the vote.
Question's been called, all in favor? Any opposed? That carries, thank you. And from Counselor Palladino, Closed Meeting Intermunicipal, Intermunicipal Matter 14.2, be resolved that city council authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the Marshall Water Pipeline Agreement with the Lethbridge County and other documents that may be required in order to give effect to the Marshall Water Pipeline Agreement, and further be resolved that city council direct the closed meeting reports, documents and discussion with respect to the intermunicipal matter remain confidential pursuant to Sections 21 Harmful to Intergovernmental Relations, and 24 Advice from Officials of the Freedom of Information Protection of Privacy Act. Counselor Palladino?
Question?
Question, it's been called, all in favor? Any opposed? So carries. And with that, we are adjourned, thank you.